Live. Telling me I can't open my camera. Can't turn it this way, but I am live. There we go.
You ain't able to make no cash off YouTube yet?
Not yet. I made about three, or about a hundred and eighty subscribers.
You can't get super chats or nothing like that yet?
I don't know. It's about half.
YouTube turns it on for you, man.
I don't know this shit, man. I need somebody to show me.
Oh, I'm learning as I go. But I don't know if it's where I got premium or not, but uh, cause I got my YouTube premium, but once I got five hundred subscribers and hit three thousand watch hours, I was able for super chats and memberships.
Really?
Yeah.
I'll check.
And the next level that I unlock is uh, the app getting paid for advertisement. It's after I get a thousand of them and uh, four thousand watch hours.
Really? Oh, God.
We got one watching. Hello, whoever you are. We are live, Everett City Hall. The meeting starts at six. What's up Johnny Vibe? Yeah, man, like right now, they can send super chats and all that stuff to me, yeah, if they wanted to. I ain't got none yet, but.
I'm fixing to check on that.
Taking selfies.
I was getting pictures today. See, he could put that for my thumbnail.
City Hall. See, I ain't learning how to do that shit. I ain't know how to put thumbnail up, man.
Mine just says put one up. See, it's got me ready. But now I can't get to it. Go live. Oh, there it is.
That's what I say. Oh, you put time and stuff in? I just said live.
No, I don't know how to schedule one. I thought you might. I was gonna get you. I was gonna schedule this, but everybody knows I was coming right back. What up world? It's your boy Crack back at it one time. Harlan County Kentucky Transparency, live. Everett City Hall.
Fixing to go in there at six.
Going in there at six.
Getting smoked up with nicotine before we have to go.
Yep, just got a notification. I was live. So we about to go in this meeting. Let's see what's going on. Everett Snake's water fix for everybody up here is gonna have cancer from the water.
That's what you already get up here and say. I'm gonna ask them what, why they wanna hide in the shadows for.
Well, man, it's the truth. You know what happened in Daywood? That's the bad water. Kentucky, first Kentucky. Live with Harlan County Kentucky Transparency.
Hey, you too. Have a good day to you.
I'm glad I got out of the house, Crack.
Oh, we have company. It's Chief. He's coming to the meeting probably.
Not much. Is he Chief? I wouldn't know.
Uh, no, Owen retired. It's some uh, little young guy.
Yeah, we holding it down. Everybody saying hello, Mark.
Hello.
He says, well, hello. So we're gonna go on up in here and be respectful, but we're gonna find out what's going on. This man has to know what's up with the water, I'm sure. I don't know who he is, but we're gonna find out.
Looks like Benny Dell coming. Not sure.
We're gonna try to get to the bottom of it and find out why the water's bad. My people come down to cancer. But before they know it, they'd be like Daywood when that woman come in here. What was her name? Erin Brockovich or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, that woman come in here in like oh four or oh five over that Daywood water.
How you doing, sir? Doing alright?
What's up, Bodie? We're here live. We're going into city council meeting this second. We can find out why the water's pour up.
Well, I pretty much know why the city's going beyond their means.
City's going beyond their means, Mark says.
Yeah. They can only pump four hundred gallons a minute and they need seven to cover the area, so we're gonna continue having these outages.
No shit?
Yeah.
How bad could it be? You can't even wash your eyes.
We'll continue having outages and boil water advisories and all that.
Oh, yeah.
And see what's bad now is they took their Facebook page down and they want everybody to register in this number to use to call. Well, I work first shift, my wife works second shift. Time they call, I don't, nobody's gonna answer the phone. I mean, so how am I gonna know if I'm under a boil water advisory? I mean, cause they're just wanting your home lines. They're asking for cell phones or nothing like that, as far as I know. They want your home phone number.
We had break in moves, Mark. Stacy Howard. Someone said there was a wreck up that way. We've not heard no ambulances or nothing.
No.
And I was just live and got off here and I didn't hear nothing. Yeah, we're in Everett, right there, City Hall. So don't share us the Twitter. Harlan County Kentucky Transparency, Facebook, Instagram, Myspace, Atari, Nintendo, long distance phone calls, whatever.
Whatever, yeah.
Whatever. Give us the likes. Give us the shares. And uh, we're gonna go in here. They think they have some water outages up here, cause they're all supposed to go up here. I'm gonna keep this real. I'm gonna be a real, or I'm gonna be Brad Imloes, but you know. But people shit like snakes clean.
Yep.
They shouldn't have to go buy a gallon of jug of water to clean themselves.
Well, we gotta buy water here regardless unless you wanna get sick. I've told everybody that drinks that city water, take the two week challenge like I did. Go buy your store water for two weeks and see if you don't feel better, cause I did. I stopped throwing up every morning. It's causing our water.
He used to tell the truth. It's on his page. I sure remember that. I remember that one of his days, he's got a mask on. Hello.
Yeah. You got Democrats, you got Republicans. Hello. This where your council meeting's taking place?
Yeah.
Grab you a seat? So you're recording that thing?
Yes, sir. That's our First Amendment right. I mean, we have the right to. Oh, yeah, I'll let them know, yeah. I thought you meant ask them permission if they minded us setting up. How you feeling, sir?
I'm recording, but I'm placing.
Yeah, we both are.
Yes, sir. I'm Brad Imloes.
I'm Harlan County Kentucky Transparency. Harlan County Kentucky Transparency.
You want water?
No, sir, thank you.
I'm a former county clerk.
I'm gonna sit this one down and get this one fixed.
Was there a wreck up through here a minute ago? Somebody on YouTube said they heard there was a wreck, but we just came up thirty eight.
I don't know.
It must've been above Everett's.
Or below it.
After us. Yeah, we got picked up pretty quick.
Yeah. Anywhere on thirty eight.
It was good. You got some.
So uh, she said that. She said that woman, she said, I'm gonna contact the nurse. She said, it's a non-invasive procedure.
Well, that may have been a wreck earlier then.
And I said, he told me to fix it. It's probably, it's from the king though.
The helicopter up here. And I seen it when it went towards the. And then I think the little water.
Oh, thank you.
Right here.
How you doing, bud? What's your name?
Good. Will Major.
Will. Major. Your name is Mark?
Yep. How you doing, Eddie?
Just meet you, sir.
We met.
We haven't met you.
Thanks for the water, sir.
They're gonna walk in with you. In case somebody else comes in, they can have a seat. I've been sitting at the office all day. Oh, I'm good, sir. I've been in that office today since I'm a stand.
It's me. I didn't wanna sit down during normal hours time, so I'm sitting here.
Then I got this watch. It'll tell me I'm being lazy.
We heard the water's bad up in Everett. Capewood. A lot of people's raising cane up that way.
Yeah.
I had a buddy go to the Attorney General over it. Sure is. Yes, we're in Everett. It's a city council meeting, guys. Harlan County Kentucky Transparency's out of set up. We're good to go, guys.
I was here. So I just live uh, uh, up the old brand. I've been nominated to my room. Strangest hard now.
We need more. Anybody need more chairs?
No, sir. Yes, sir. I've been in my office for a while, yeah. Alright, sir, thank you.
You doing okay?
Good.
I thought maybe you run back and forth. Thank you. Minute, it's just crazy.
What's up?
Oh, hi, I'm sorry. No, I, I have to come up with a personal. Well, alright, I'll be there soon.
Do you need one?
Do you need chair?
Nah, I'm fine.
There's one right there.
There's one there. Oh, no, you're fine. Okay.
You'd be a right man to sit here.
Been another two minutes to sit on. You wanna get a pin?
Yep.
I'm wearing my own. Thank you.
I'm good. I don't even know how to ride.
Good, how are you?
How are you?
Okay. Send some of my food for your wife. I still an hour drive. I can drive. Silver. Everything's silver.
Six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get a meeting started. Nobody else outside, you need to come in.
Nothing I say, sir.
Oh, of course. As always, appreciate you guys coming in. Before we get started, would you care to start us a little prayer, sir?
Yes, sir. Or we thank you for your love and your mercy, your long suffering, and we thank you, Lord, for the little bit of uh, reprieve that we've had and the help that you've allowed us to have. Uh, for things to sell a little bit smoother. We thank you for that and ask God that you'd guide our footsteps. Give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding of what to do to make the best decisions for not just today, but tomorrow. We ask everything in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Alright, I apologize for my voice again. I'll try to speak up if you can't hear me, just let me know. City of Everett's council meeting, the date of Tuesday, February twenty, two thousand twenty-four, is gonna be called to order. First thing on our agenda for tonight is gonna be financial report.
We have your financial report in your package. We'll start with uh, our account balances as of uh, January thirty first, two thousand twenty-four. General fund ended the month with sixty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirteen cents. Cold severance, eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twelve cents. Fire fund had nine thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-one cents. Police drug had two hundred and nine dollars and fifty-two cents. Street fund had thirteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents. Recreation, one thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. County garbage fund had twelve thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars, ninety-eight cents. Cops for kids had seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-four cents. Tourism, twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents. Sanitation, sixteen hundred, twenty-seven dollars, two cents. Sewer operations, twenty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. The sewer depreciation reserve, fifty dollars. Water operations, sixteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars, ninety-four cents. American relief plan had seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars, eighty-six cents. USDA bond account had six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. Water deposit fund had ninety-four thousand, ninety-nine dollars and twenty-six cents. KIA fund had a hundred dollars. And the sanitation, or the, the water credit card had two thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars, sixty-eight cents. For a total of three hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars, ninety-nine cents. General fund for the month brought in twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and forty-four cents. It expanded twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and three cents. It brought in one thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-one cents more for the month than it expanded. For the year, it has expanded nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-six cents more than it has brought in. Your uh, transactions uh, for the month are on the next two pages. I'll give you a second to look over those. Sanitation brought in ten thousand, forty-four dollars and sixty-one cents. Expanded ten thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Expanded nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents more than it brought in. For the year, it's brought in seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-two cents more than it has expended. Three, three payments it made are on the next page. Sewer brought in twelve thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and thirty cents. It expanded twelve thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and nineteen cents. It expanded two hundred and fifty dollars, eighty-nine cents more than it brought in. It has expanded three thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-two cents more than it has brought in for the year. And the water fund brought in forty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and seventy cents. It expanded forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. It expanded five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents more than it brought in. For the month, for the year, it has expanded twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-four cents for the.
Make a motion, accept the bookkeeper's report.
Motion, accept the report. Jason Sekins, everybody in favor. All in favors. Thank you, Troy. Next, we're gonna move on to the minutes for last month.
You got two sets of minutes in there. We'll do the first one. The City of Everett's scheduled meeting on Tuesday, January sixteenth, the minutes, President Mayor Eman, Renee Dumb, Jackie Higbro, Bernie Ward, and Larry Hall. Meeting is called to order. The finance report is read. Ernie makes a motion to accept the finance report. Minutes for the November fourteenth meeting are read. Larry makes a motion to accept the report. Uh, Jackie Sekins and all present agree. Minutes for the November twenty-seventh meeting is read. Renee makes a motion to accept the report. Larry Sekins and all present agree. Uh, police report is read. Ernie makes a motion to accept the report. Larry Sekins and all present agree. Fire report is read. Ernie makes a motion to accept the report. Renee Sekins and all present agree. Water report is read. Jackie makes a motion to accept the report. Larry Sekins all present, uh, agree. And Renee makes a motion to adjourn. Jackie Sekins all present.
Is everybody giving the last one?
While you're signing though, we'll leave the special call, the city council meeting for Tuesday, January thirtieth. President Mayor Eman, Jackie Higbro, Renee Dumb, Ernie Ward, Larry Hall, based this. Meeting is called to order. Discussion of the recent water outage and the need of funding for repairs. Uh, Mayor informs the council that we need to repair our sixty-year-old system, and in order to do that, we'll need to go for loans and grants. Eddie Sparks is present to speak for the city council regarding the recent water outages. Mayor goes over the future projects that the water system is in need of. A new storage tank to add extra water storage at the plant, repairs to the city water lines that are over sixty years old. Grants for the water plant and a follow-up on the AML grant. Renee makes a motion for the mayor to leak it low and give up grants up to seven million dollars for the project. Uh, Jason Sekins and all present agree. Jason makes a motion to adjourn. Renee Sekins and all present agree.
Larry made motion, Sekins, Sekins, and Jackie Sekins. Everybody good with Sekins? Alright, uh, we got a couple of engineering problems that comes in. Talked to you guys about a sewer project and we'll do that in our business. That's what we've always been doing. Our, our business. So uh, while we're signing this, I'll go ahead and let Woody give you guys the water report for the month.
Um, as y'all can see, the water loss significantly came down uh, from what it was just last month. Those numbers are estimated because at the time that we had all this going on, last month, we had to estimate the meters due to the snow and then due to the uh, everybody kind of been hands on deck as far as getting the leaks fixed and things. So that could be a plus or minus five percent or so, but we probably went from about sixty-five percent to anywhere from twenty to twenty-five percent. So that's a huge chunk and we're still going at it. Uh, gonna try to get that down even lower, but it's probably the lowest it's been in about three years.
Good job, man.
Yeah, you guys know that we've uh, we've implemented our plan as far as having the distribution and the, you know, the plants separate each other. So that, that's a plan we implemented uh, when all this started, and that seems to be going really good. So now we've got water. You know, the water plant operators making the water, but we've got a separate team that's just doing distribution. Which basically means they're looking for leaks, they're looking for people stealing, they're looking for anything that will help us with water loss. Uh, and they, they've been reporting to me and they're, they're doing good at it. Of course, with the system being down as low as it is right now with water loss, of course, they're harder to find because we don't have as many out there, but that, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Uh, so as you all seen it, we've been, Woody can probably tell you a lot more than I can about it, but you, we're right now, we're down, we're running. As of today, we're down to one well in the mines. The mines has picked up. So we're running off one well right now. We're not even having new river pumps, which is wonderful. So that's how much it's helped us and we talked off of it.
And the main thing that we're waiting on is the telemetry to be fixed. And the main thing that we're waiting on is the telemetry to be fixed. All that money's available, we're just waiting on the company that was awarded the project. And I contacted them today, and they said they're still two to three months out, waiting on everything to come in. So we're just kind of just trying to call them, just kind of poke and prod them just to try to hurry up and get something done. But it don't look like the parts and pieces are coming in anytime soon. So it's probably gonna be an early summertime project in all likelihood. But that will be a tool that we can use that'll help us better understand where the water's going. And instead of it being a system-wide thing, trying to find that other twenty percent, we can narrow it down to half the system. And when you're looking for five hundred meters instead of a thousand, that's gonna save a lot of time and a lot of, you know, chasing things that's not there. So that'll give us directions to go, and that'll be probably the most helpful thing that we can do. But that's nothing we can do. The project's already been awarded, and they're just kind of waiting on parts, is what they're telling us. So that's where we're at on that. Hopefully, they'll come in sooner than later, but we're probably looking at early summertime before that's complete.
If y'all remember that project, it was bid and awarded and supposed to be done by end of January or December. And they just came to parts, and said they're still in back order. So we had to give them an extension. We talked a little bit today. I think that as far as starting over, you'd never like to start over. But if they don't meet their next deadline, we may have to look at trying to find somebody else to do the project. I understand things going back order, but we need those telemetries. And it's already the money's there and allocated for it, and just waiting on to put them in. And that'll help us a lot with the leak protection, I think. So that's it. The telemetries will be great, and we should give them another new ones. Now, the Shields Telemetry works, and the Salton Branch did work after this bad storm. So Law Branch hasn't worked in a while. But we get that, that'll help us tremendous. If they don't meet the deadline, I'll come back to you guys and talk to you about how you wanna handle it. We've already given one extension. Like I said, I understand things going back order, and this is the way we're made. But we need our telemetries. So we may have to drop down and re-beat it and try some remaining pistachio.
I make the motion.
Are we putting any water or using any water, or we're gonna make?
No.
They just find it leaks up there around it?
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't nothing to do with us. We were up there and actually helped them with that, get that under control. Our guys, because we thought maybe it could have been water.
I was up there today, and it was the main thing that I was watching them, and he started talking to me. He said, "You all run about a week, and you're gonna use all of our water out of that lake." I said, "Give me a call, I'll go fishing."
I don't, I'm trying to keep me up to date on... But they done it. The lake is actually just, it's linked to the, you know, what's... They did nothing out there in the river, trying to relieve that pressure, so, yeah. Is everybody in favor of water too? Next, we're gonna move on. We're gonna come back to some water here on new businesses and stuff. But next, we're gonna come back to... We're gonna go to the police report.
We had a total of four reports. Of those four, two were drug-related, one theft-related, and one assault-related. Thankfully, we had zero on traffic collisions in the month of January. A total of five motors assists, responded to a total of twenty-seven complaints. Five agency assists, seven traffic stops, and ten arrests. Total officer man-hours of three hundred and seventy-eight hours.
Hey Danny.
Yes, ma'am.
In your last report, you didn't... I know we always do it every year since I've been doing it. How many kids did you have for Cops for Kids? You didn't have it in the report last month.
It was either fourteen or sixteen.
It was fourteen, it was fourteen.
And you spent...
I don't have that before.
It was in one of the reports we had.
It was in the report from last month, sure.
It wasn't in the, you know, because we always had to, you know, report it every time we used the money.
I can get that for you, though, I can get that.
Is there anyone, anybody got any questions for the evening, or anything else?
No, I make the motion.
Larry Sekins, everybody good with the police report? Next, is my favorite time of the night, mostly my main man, Cleo.
Yep, yep. In this time around, we only had two fires. Been about all that's going on, other than that, been pretty quiet. The way we like it quiet. But just two fires is all we had going on this time.
We always like it when Cleo gets a small report tonight.
Yeah, I've got moved in in your new place. I need to stop in and say...
Come on, we'll see it, join if you want to. Tuesday night at six o'clock, take all the volunteer we can get.
Listen, they ain't no dragging no hose for me. This guy's two hundred and...
That's a job for everybody. You can do traffic control, paperwork. There's always something to do.
We, one thing, please, I just got...
I can grind them gears with best I can.
There you go, there's your job.
When you come over and help me change the lock for that old man that lives next to you.
Ain't no problem, y'all, no problem.
Yeah, I heard about that.
Yeah, thank you.
Are you food, Cleo?
I'm done.
I'm liking making that approach.
Ernie's smoking.
I get a second on that?
I'll say it.
Alright, next, we're gonna move to old business. We got a couple of things in old business to go over. One will be the sewer project that we had, you know, the five hundred thousand dollars that we got for the wastewater, which is sewer. So that, that project, we're gonna go over tonight. I think Ken's here to talk to us about that and let you know where we're at on it. And maybe even a resolution so we can go ahead and get that project started. If you all look at our sewer numbers, we're spending a lot of money repairing sewer system right now. This project will take care of, it will, you know, completely update all of our lift stations. So that will really relieve us on the sewer fund right now, once that project's up and going and it's done. So Ken, I'll let you talk to me about that.
If you recall, the total project estimate cost was six hundred and eighty-eight thousand. And you got five hundred thousand in fact, six months ago or whatever, y'all agreed to go to KIA for a loan to get the other hundred and eighty-eight, so we could do all of it and update all of the lift stations. So you should have a resolution there that we had to wait until we got the audits and the financial stuff updated before we could actually apply for it. So that's been a holdup on that. Now we've got that, so we just, we need a resolution to turn in the application to KIA for the other hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
We've already, you guys have already approved us to follow the rest of the money to fix that sewer system. So all we need to do tonight is, Christie, we have to read the resolution. We pass a resolution, and then once we do that, we can get that done. Now, that wastewater money, that five hundred thousand dollars is still in Frankfurt. That don't get released until the project is...
Yeah, we'll have to draw it down. We'll have to bid the renovations and then award contract as contractor does things. We'll have to draw it down. They won't send us a check. They probably sent you a big Starphone check. But that's all we can get until we actually expend some of the money.
Christie, read the resolution, we'll get it passed.
I'm proposing a resolution of City of Everett compiling a loan application and appointing appropriate local government officials and successors in the title as official project representative of the infrastructure revolving fund, Fund B State Revolving Loan Program. Whereas the City of Everett's proposes to complete a project as identified in the Water Resource Inflation System, W R I S, as S X two one zero nine five zero one five. And whereas the City of Everett's endorses said project. And whereas, under the terms of amendments to K R S two two four A, the state is authorized to render financial assistance to eligible project applicants by way of the Infrastructure Revolving Fund, Fund B State Revolving Loan Program, established to aid in the construction of eligible infrastructure projects with consideration for approval to be based on applications submitted through KIA. And whereas, the improvements proposed for construction by the City of Everett's within the City of Everett's Sewage Collection System area are considered eligible for such loan assistance. Now therefore, being involved by the City of Everett, City Council, and Mayor Eddie Dunn and successors entitled are hereby authorized to execute and submit an application through the Community Infrastructure Authority with such assurance and required supporting data as it is necessary to obtain loan assistance from the Infrastructure Revolving Fund, Fund B State Revolving Loan Program. For the proposal, facilities, improvements, and hereby authorized and the City of Everett's official project representative to carry out necessary negotiations for and administer the loan assistance. The applicant may obtain the Infrastructure Revolving Fund, Fund B State Revolving Loan Program, adopted this twentieth day of February, twenty twenty-four.
Can I get a motion to accept the resolution? Jason, motion. Preston Sekins, everybody in favor of this? Okay, we'll get this started on this. This will be a big help to us because our sewer system, this will update all of our pump stations. Seven teams, is that correct? Seven. So this will update all seven of our pump stations with new rubber pumps. And that'll alleviate, even though we're borrowing money on it, this project will, it'll hold us for years and years and years. And it'll be a lot better paying a payment than we'll be paying to fix all these pumps we've been paying up to sew. So that'll, that'll help us a whole lot. Okay, if that's passed, we'll take that and we'll have to get our secretary.
Ken, does Eddie need to sign this too?
Yeah.
Alright, we got that done. Next, and we're still in old business. I want to let Mike talk to you guys a little bit, if he's got a minute.
Sure.
About the storage tank project. And that, that project, we talked about it last month. That project really excites me because it's gonna take us from six months to six hours of storage if we have an emergency for twenty-four hours. A lot of people, a lot of people don't know, if we had an emergency in Everett right now, the way our system's set up, we've only got six hours of emergency storage. That don't leave you much time for anything to happen. So this, this project will give us two twenty-four hours. And now with the water loss down, maybe even more, don't you think, Woody? So that'll give us more water storage. That'll give us as much water storage almost as we already got. So if we had an emergency, like say if we're pumping out the river and it's muddy and the paint pump, if we have something going on, that'll give us enough storage to where we can, we still have a lot of water. This would be a big asset for us, I think. So I'll let Mike talk to you guys about it a little bit.
Yeah, what you have is kind of an update of what I've been working on since November the twenty-seventh. And we did new project profiles. The water storage tank was actually a recommendation by the Division of Water. They came and did some checking. What that'll allow, it is storage, and it will actually allow us a clear well backwash. So we're actually putting in pumps so you can lower the level of the tank and utilize the entire portion of the tank and the existing tank. So that's almost seven hundred thousand. So that gives us approximately twenty-four to thirty-five hours of storage. So that would allow us, if we had, you know, bad water coming, that we'd at least have some water that we could put aside. We did apply for an A R C grant for the tank. We do have clearinghouse comments, and they have been approved as of February the eighth. Which is the beginning of the environmental process. So they've got recommendations on what we need to do with fish and wildlife and things like that. So we've also responded, KIA sent a request, some clarifications based on the size. The original application we put in was four hundred and ninety-one thousand. And based on the money and numbers, we went five hundred and thirty-one thousand. And it actually gave us a total of twenty-four hours. It matched the plant capacity. So that's how we came up with that number. So we applied for the A R C. The judge said that once we got the A R C, that they would have four hundred thousand grant from their Cold Severance. And as a backup, we also got on the KIA S R F low interest loan list. You had to be on the list prior. We done that by December the fifteenth to get on twenty twenty-five. So we're on that. They actually had a few questions, I answered that. That's also included in your packet. And so that's what we've been doing on the tank, and of course, we've been doing all this stuff too.
Alright, and just to clarify, and we'll make sure to clarify this. We have to procure an engineer on these projects. We've not done that yet because there's, we have to put out bids for it. You know, Ken and Mike have both been doing a lot of work for us. But next meeting in March, by that time, Seabad should have us the stuff we need to put that in the paper for bids for procurement. So next meeting, you guys will have to decide who we're gonna use as engineer on these projects. I just wanna make that clear. Mike's been doing, Mike's been doing a lot of work on that, Ken's been doing a lot of work. But ultimately, we have to do it legally, we have to procure the engineers. So we gotta let them decide that. Not the sewer, because Ken's already got that going.
That'd be specifically for the treatment plant, because each individual project would, would, we'd have to go through the R F U.
Specifically for the treatment plant and the storage. Just, I just wanna make that perfectly clear while we're involved in handling this. So I think that the way that works with this grant, we've applied for the A R C grant. Of course, we've been, approval and funding is completely different. We all understand that. You can be approved, and once you're approved, that just means you're approved for the application. It's really confusing the way it works. But now, from my understanding, that's a one point four million dollar project that will help us a lot quick. And it won't be something that'll be four or five years out. This will be something that's six months, seven months out.
Right.
So what that'll do is, that's a million dollars of A R C grant, and I think that will... Even though we're not, we're approved, not funded, I think it'll get funded. I've been promised that. And then that'll leave us four hundred thousand dollars short. And Judge Mosley has promised that he'll take four hundred thousand from Cold Severance and complete that project. So once we get the procurement done next month, we can, we can start on getting that done pretty quick. That, that project, I think that'll help us in the, that'll help relieve us fast. That may be, that's our quickest option as far as helping us. So is anybody got anything else they need to ask or anything, questions? Eddie?
You said for sure where you're gonna be located at?
Right now, the location looks like it's gonna be right beside a road tank up there. And you gotta look now, that tank we got up there, to my understanding, Woody can correct me if I'm wrong, because he's the system expert, but that's a hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Eighty-three.
Okay, that's the biggest tank we have, correct?
Yep, the other one's just about like it, it's a hundred and eighty-nine, it's six thousand gallons.
If you look at that tank being a hundred and eighty-nine thousand gallons, and we're talking about putting the tank beside us, it's gonna be five hundred and thirty-three thousand gallons.
Two and a half thousand or something.
Right, so what that, that will help us with storage. And like I said, you know, if we have something come up, it's an emergency, because Lord knows we have emergencies in Everett. We have an emergency, then we go from having that little tank for storage and some of our tanks, other tanks, to getting almost double our capacity. So that'll give us enough room if we have something going on, that, you know, that we've got enough water stored up that we can go a couple of days, and not just six hours like we have these.
Well, and the biggest thing will be the pumps that's gonna be in that project for the backwash water. We don't have to maintain a huge level of water within the tank. We can pump water we got in the tank out into the system. If we've got four or five feet, we should have enough water to backwash. So it's, that allows us to just push as much as we got on hand out in the system and buy us more time. So that's something we currently don't have. We just, that's why we have to have the tank levels at a certain capacity in order for there to be enough pressure there to come into the plant. Because even at thirty-two feet, you're only looking at eleven or twelve P S I coming in. So that's not very much water anyway. So this will help with the filter washes and all that, and that'll help ensure the life of the filters, so.
And let me say this, Woody.
Yes, sir.
This is up here near our leaning tower.
Yeah.
Water tank up here, is it sustainable? Will it hold all this?
Well, we'll do, of course, we'll do a geotechnical review. And I actually talked to the contractor that installed the other one. And he said they excavate the, the one that's standing now. that's standing now and he said they excavated all the material, hauled it off and then built it back up with stone. So of course we'll do geotech, find what it is, the low bearing of the rock and soil there and then we'll design that foundation accordingly.
Okay.
Thanks. Mike's gonna personally guarantee it, so.
Yeah.
Like I said, let me say this, just because, and I've told somebody this today, I said just because we're doing good, I mean, we're down with the mines, one well, the mine pump out the river, we got water overflowing in our tanks and we're doing great. But just because we're doing good, don't mean we need to let up on people, get known to the governor and other people to help us, because come summer, we're not back in this mode if we don't. So I don't want people to forget that they still need to talk to the representatives, they still need to talk to people, because it's kinda out of, you know, outside, out of mind when you're doing good, but we don't need to let up.
Well, in a month's time, we went from sixty-five cent to around twenty percent. So that tells me that in a month's time, we could go from twenty to sixty-five.
Right.
And I don't anticipate that happening, but that is a way we need to look at it so that we remain proactive instead of reactive.
The thing that's helped us the most during all this has been people contacting the governor's office and contacting your state representatives, because there is a pool of money that was set aside in two thousand twenty-two for just this reason by the state legislature. It was put aside, it was ten million dollars. It was put aside to help water systems, ailing water systems in this part of the state, because a lot of their water systems are old. As of a couple of weeks ago, they told me that they had spent, now this was two thousand twenty-two, they spent nine hundred thousand dollars and gave back to Martin County to help their water system. There's still nine point one million dollars sitting in that fund that's made for this specific reason. So, and the governor's on board now, he's heard the complaints, he said, I'm gonna help you guys and that's what we need, but if people quit complaining, they'll think we're fixed. We're not fixed and we, we're just in good shape right now. So, yes, sir.
Brad Inlow, you're fixing to have a crazy platform of people calling Uncle Andy for you.
That's what I mean.
I'm from Harlan, I, I live downtown and I'm covering a little bit of everything in this county, from the homeless people to this, everything else. So we need, how is this compared to the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, when I was at the county road department, the Green Hill disaster? Like, what's the, can you explain people's point of view?
I didn't know much about the Green Hill stuff.
I was working there, but I've had a few, few car wrecks since then. I was taking water over there as an county employee with inmates. Is that going on up here? Are y'all giving water out?
We, yeah, we've been giving water out.
Like the road department?
Road department's helped us, fire department's helped us.
I thought so, I just wanted to make sure, but where do you go? Just call the, all these people watching, all my black people, Kyle and Ray.
We have two state representatives in Harlan.
Johnny Turner.
Johnny Turner, Adam Boland, Adam Boland's contacted us, Johnny's office has contacted us, they're helping. Adam actually went to the state a couple of weeks ago and asked about this money I'm talking about, you know, about this money that's sitting in the legislature for us. We're, we're gonna get help, but what I'm afraid of is I don't want people to quit complaining. Listen, I want you to complain. I want you to keep, because if you don't keep the pressure on them, they're not gonna help us.
Side mail's what happened.
Yeah, so I want you to say, hey, look, even though we got water today, let's get this, you know, they, they, they pretty much well told us about some projects that I think were being awarded, but until you get that award letter in your hand, it's hard to tell people, you know, hey, this is what they're gonna do, because you never know what'll change. But keep your complaints up. Hal Rogers has been wonderful, Mitch McConnell's office has been wonderful. Just keep those complaints up, don't stop, because we're doing good, because in the summer it's, we'll be filling pools, we'll be doing all this, our mines will be, we're right back in the same boat. And that may not be as bad and we hope it's never that bad again, but keep complaining. That's what I tell people, keep complaining, don't stop.
I got a platform around here that will be complaining, trust me.
Keep talking to them, because they're not, they're, they're only gonna, they're only gonna help us when, when they're complaining, when they're hearing the complaints.
People's gonna say this, there'll be about three thousand people probably watch this and I'll drop numbers and everything, so we'll get you some complaints.
We need them, hey, everybody's.
Don't worry. Keep calling, keep that good when you need it.
Has anybody, has anybody got anything else in old business? Ken, you got anything to add? Resolution is what I need.
That's all, thank you.
All right.
I got something I wanna ask. I wanna know, why are you all not being transparent on Facebook anymore? I mean, to me, it's like you're trying to hide in the shadows.
We're not trying to hide nothing, that's for sure. If you got any questions, you know, we'll answer them. As far as Facebook goes, we try to update everybody and Attorney General's Office called me about this and they went back and looked through our Facebook and they said, actually, you guys has updated more than any water system I see. We update with the best knowledge we have. It's hard to give updates every hour or two, because so many things change. Woody does the updates, of course, and he gives it to them to post on Facebook.
But you're planning on deleting that, right?
We ain't planning on deleting it, no. What we're planning on doing, we've got an all-call system in place now, but we won't delete the Facebook. The all-call system will take care of this.
But we won't post on Facebook.
But we won't post as much on Facebook, because that's what the all-call system's for. The all-call system will, once you sign up for it, it'll give you updates on your phone or however you need it. It'll call you or text you. That's, that's what the, and that was another recommendation of the Attorney General's office. They wanted us to do that. They thought that was a better system, because not everybody's got Facebook, but everybody's got a phone. So they thought that would be a better system for us to go by.
Okay.
So a lot of people's not using Facebook, they're using other platforms, maybe TikTok, seriously TikTok.
Yeah.
A lot more people's on there, a lot more people's on YouTube.
The, the system Attorney General's Office wanted us to use was that, when they felt like that that was a better system for us to go to, because like they said, a lot of people don't have Facebook, people in this room probably don't have it, some of us do. But they felt like that was a better way for us to get out of updates through that all-call system. And that, what that'll do is that'll, once you sign up for it, and as people come in to pay the bills, we're asking them to sign up, it's free to the customers, and it'll give them updates, like if we have anything going on, it'll give them updates.
Like the Everett's Amberler.
Yeah, it'll give you texts for having.
Just the same, like when they call them cancel school, it's the same, the same identical.
Same thing.
And that's probably a better system as far as being able to get out to everyone.
That is, that's pretty good.
But like I said, when, when the Attorney General's Office called me, they felt like that we had updated more than about any water system they've ever seen. And I said, we're doing the best we can as far as giving updates, but we, daily updates is usually about what you're working on, because you really don't know what's going on, you know, every hour is different.
Well, during, during all the problems, we gave updates every two to three hours.
Yeah, y'all updated, right?
I don't, I don't know what more we could've updated, to be honest with you, but we can't sit at a computer all day long when we got other obligations either. So we was getting our work done, trying to update as we could and being as transparent as possible, which is way more transparent than most utilities and I understand why, because a lot of them's so outstretched that they didn't have time just to be posting updates, they were busy fixing leaks, trying to restore water, so it was just a priority thing.
Yeah, as far as B mode's customers, you know, we was on the phone, B mode constantly doing all this. So they had updates, whether they sent them to their customers, I can't tell you, but now we give them updates, because they needed updates too, so. But that's what we're going through, is the all-call system, we think that'd be a better system and that was recommended by the Kentucky Attorney General's Office. So we're gonna do it by, by them, of course. Has anybody got anything else in old business? I'm gonna move on to new business, which, new business is in water too, so. Hal Rogers' office has contacted us, they've been in touch with us a lot. I appreciate them a lot as far as everybody that goes. They've probably been in contact, of course, the judge has, but you know, Hal Rogers' office has been in contact a lot. He has some discretionary funds that he has through Congress that we filled out and sent into him. Hopefully they can give us some discretionary funds and help us and I think the way the discretionary funds work, it'll be at Hal Rogers' discretion. So that'd be great and that's, comes from complaints. Call them, you see what that gets you when they call you and say, I got discretionary funds, you all apply for them, we'll see if we can help them. So that, that's, that's gonna be something that'll help us and hopefully they'll be able to do some of that for us.
And in regards to that, if somebody does need the email addresses, mailing addresses, phone numbers, please call them. We'd be happy to type a letter up for you and place for you to sign your name, because it's only gonna help bolster the points we've been trying to make and they're gonna listen to the constituents more than they'll listen to us, because we're, you know, we're the workers and of course we'd like a new facility, but when it comes from the, the voting base and it comes from the consumers, that's when it'll really get the attention. So, so that's, that's gonna be something that's necessary, like Eddie's trying to iterate to us.
And some, and things that hurt us in Everett's and hurts us all over the county is, and I'll explain this, you know, is that, you know, our water system's got a thousand customers, a thousand and ten customers, that's all that's in our water system. And you know, when we go out and borrow money to fix things, you know, that has to be split up between the thousand customers we have, that's through, it's the rates, whereas when you get to a big municipality, you know, they may borrow five million dollars and it's spread out between two hundred thousand customers. And that's one of the biggest disadvantages we have in Harlan County is, is we have such a small population that those people keep getting hit. That's why you need your state representatives to help with things like this, because you know, it's not, it's not fair, but it's our population. So that, that is one of the, that's always been one of our biggest disadvantages. We don't have the customer base that they have in big municipalities, we don't have the tax base they have, but when it comes to millions and millions of dollars, that's where the state needs to step in and help us and they will, if we keep complaining. If you stop complaining, they'll say, ah, they're fixed. We're not fixed. We're in way better shape than we was and we're doing a better job at it, but as far as being fixed, the water plant's just wore out. It's just, we've talked about it, it started in nineteen ninety when they built a dam to put water to the plant and then build a plant that wouldn't handle water out of the river. So that's when it started and it's just progressively got worse and we've added stuff to it, we've added new businesses, we've added jail, home center, more houses and over the years, it's like a car, it's like a car with five hundred thousand miles on it and it's just, it's just biged up. So I think that we're gonna get help, but I think that we're not gonna get help if we don't keep complaining. So we need to keep doing that. We need to stay on it even during the good times, just like the bad times. So that's all I had in new business. Has anybody got anything else, council members? Is anybody, anything and questions? Don't mind if it's answered. Eddie, you got anything?
Yes, I've got it.
Mark, you got anything?
No, sir.
Oh, I don't. I just, I've got people on here that would love to have them, I mean, we can Google them, but I would love to have a copy of them numbers just to post out here, you know, people can Google them.
Woody's got every bit of them, he's got email addresses, he's got phone numbers, he's got everything you need. And you know, like I said.
We're very transparent.
You just want to, you just want to let them know that we still need help, because like I said, it, you know, you get a car with five hundred thousand miles on it and it finally's running right.
Oh, it's posted out in pieces?
Yeah, it's, it still needs help, so if you neglect it and say, I don't know, okay, then they'll forget about us. We don't wanna forget about us, because we still need help. Yes, Eddie?
I know there was some talk at one time about maybe splitting up some of the system from Ages toward Harlan and trying to register some of that. Did that go away? Is that still?
Me and Dan talked about that a couple of years ago and the problem with that is elevation, just like we have with Close Plant and Llewellyn customers, it's elevation. Harlan can pump water up so far, but once you get to the Ages community, they can supply water in the bottom, Ages bottom, but they cannot supply water to about ten houses, to my understanding, up on a hill at Ages.
And on the hill of Cox.
So up on the hill of Cox and also, so what happens is, they don't, they need, actually, if they had a pump station, they could do it, but they don't have a pump station in between there, it's, it's just elevation. So if you've got water from Harlan, you're gonna have houses without water, because they don't have the elevation, whereas our elevation is running downhill, so we can get to the houses good. Yeah, that, that's, that's, it's looked into, it would be a lot cheaper to put a pump station and pump it from Harlan, but then what if you overstrain Harlan? See, Harlan, they've got good water, they pump out of the river and they've got a good, you know, good system, but how much more can you put on them? Because they already hoarse that water. So for right now, in order to keep everybody in the water, it needs to come from eight of us. I, I would love to see that took off of us, it would relieve us a lot, but it's just not possible with the systems, whether they are from Harlan or not, if that makes sense.
It does, it does. It sounds like, I guess, and that was something of my concern coming here tonight, was wondering, in the short term, you know, the leaks have got fixed and it's been great and things are going well now, but some of the things you mentioned in last meeting about long-term projects like regu and the water plant, that's where I was wondering where we're, we're at with that. What the storage tank sounds like, it's gonna be a.
That'll help us, but as far as the water plant goes, we've got to procure, we'll have to procure an engineer for that when we get started on that again. That should be done by next meeting. We think that with, the way C B A D's doing it, we think we'll be able to get it bided, council will decide and then we can move forward with that project. That project's a lot more lengthy project than fixing this tank, than putting a new tank in.
Right.
The tank will be an immediate, the tank will be immediate, they'll also, but.
Actually declared a state of emergency, so they went ahead and approved that, so that we didn't have to go through procurement as far as an engineer goes. So if that's done correctly. So that's, that's our understanding and what, what they told me is something that is, can be done immediately and what they say immediately is in, you know, three, four, or five months. Once the money's there, you can get a tank up, but they said a plant project is not an emergency situation, because that's something that's gonna take years. So that's why we're able to move so quickly by them declaring, I think it was in November, the state of emergency. So that opened up some doors for us to move faster on the, the smaller things before we get to the larger project, which is the plant.
And one thing I want you to understand is, you know, Buckhorn, the only plant that I know of in eastern Kentucky to be awarded was Buckhorn, which secured City of Hazard. City of Hazard and Buckhorn was without water the whole time we was without water. So that money, even though that project's been awarded and starting to fund, you're still years away from getting it done. So for us, you know, even if they come in right now and send us ten million dollars at our table and say, there you go, there's your money, we're still talking years away from getting a plant built. So we've got to look for, we've got to look for solutions that is more immediate, that will help the problems now, because as we've talked about it, three or four years to get a plant built, I'd say it'd be hard to build one in three or four years. By the time you did the minnow studies, bat studies, prob ed studies.
Environmental.
Environmental stuff, you get all that done. So for us, you know, yeah, we want a plant and we need a plant and we're gonna fight for a plant and we want the funding for a plant, but we've got to look at the immediate. We can't go through four more years of this. So we've got things to do and that's why I think the tank will come in. I think that's where having a distribution manager now is gonna help us, having them in here to train our guys for leak detection. And one thing about it, and I might've told you guys this last meeting, it made me feel better about leaks, is, you know, we had one big leak, it was a big leak up here by the Church of God. Our guys chased that leak for a long time and really couldn't find it and we had the experts in here. They had a hard time finding it. I mean, so they said, oh, we found it, then they didn't find it and found it. So that made me feel better of our guys, you know, they're good, they're not experts, they're trained good, but I mean, if they're having, if they can't find it, if they can't pinpoint it, you know, and they're the experts, our guys, you know, they're having a hard time finding it. So that made me feel better about that. But we, you know, we've gotta make small steps to make sure that we don't, that we ensure that we don't get in the same boat we was in. And I think having a distribution manager's gonna help us, because he talks to me daily or every other day and lets me know what's going on and I know there are these leaks. We got, for our system to be successful, that system needs to stay around five hundred thousand gallons a day to be successful, wouldn't you say, Woody?
Absolutely.
Okay, there was times during this water outage, we pumped eight hundred thousand gallons a day.
Still losing.
And still losing water. So, and our plants just not designed to do that much pumping. So for us to be successful, we've got to keep our water loss down, we've got to keep all mistakes to the minimum, just to stay afloat. So, and that's what we plan on doing, you know, and because I'm telling you, a new plant's not gonna be in here a year.
Yeah, I understood that, I just, at some point, you gotta get that forward momentum, or four years down the road, you'll be sitting here having the same conversation.
That's correct.
Yep.
And we're, we're gonna have problems in the following year, because that's when everything, and you know, when the U S Geological Service has told me, I just called them, and I said, you know, look, we've deepened all four of our wells, we cased them, we've done everything we can do in Everest, I wanna drill another well. And they told me right in Everest, you know, it's a shot in the dark to drill a fifty thousand dollar well, and their recommendation was look to Sal's Branch, so I was kinda concerned about that, you know, of, of the longevity. Now, as far as getting out of the river goes, y'all know we've got a second pump set up at Yocum Creek, we've not had to use it yet, they pulled it and done a new well, and that's great, we didn't have to use it. Um, and I hope we never have to use it, but it's there if we need it, so, and that's, that's, that'll come, Yocum Creek will clear a lot faster than Clove Creek. So I hope we don't have to, I hope we're able to keep our leaks down, and we're able to, uh, but eventually, guys, we know it, this is Everest, we go through hard times. We're gonna have another cold spill next year, and it's gonna be just like this, we'll be doing it every year. So we just got to make sure that the next year, when it happens, we're not at forty percent water loss and then go to sixty-five, we need to be at twenty, fifteen, and go to forty, and that makes it much more manageable, if that makes sense.
Woody, it, losing water, I mean, I mean, the broken pipe or whatever, versus people borrowing our water and not paying for it.
That's all.
Well, let's dig it, is that the matter same?
Uh, no, no, the, that's all included within the water loss, uh, we take that in consideration within both numbers, yes.
Yeah, that's part of it, you know, we, we had one day where, I think, I want to think from back in September maybe, where our guys finally got a chance to go out and start looking for, you know, going meter to meter, look for stealing.
Dirt, Davis, and them stealing.
And one day, they had failed five customers stealing water in one day.
Very bad.
So now we got, see now, we got, the way we've got the distribution system set up, they can start doing that again. When you don't have water, it's all hands on deck, fixing anything is fixed, but when you're doing good is when you can start looking for stealing, and there was some pretty good stealing going. Uh, I, I don't think it's, uh, five or ten percent, but it could be, but, but we've got to stay on that, we've got to make sure nobody's stealing water. If you see somebody stealing water, your neighbors, hey, call them your neighbor, trust me, every complaint we get from the neighbor, call them your neighbor, because if they're stealing water, it ain't fair to you.
No, sir, I ain't.
If they're leaking water on the ground, they wasting it, that ain't fair to you, so, call them, see anybody got anything else? Honey, I didn't ask you, what you, if you have anything to say, anything to ask?
Um, I'm Mackenzie Gilliam, I'm here with Black and Noll, I was just wanting to, um, if it's okay, I would like to pass out some flyers, you'll.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you got behind me, I got yous there.
Yeah, I came a little late there.
It was a bold lady.
You gotta tell me where it's lying, huh?
I have, um, two events going on, this is for anybody in the room, anybody that wants this, um, we work with different projects, um, one I'm working with right now is water, another I'm working with is land and revenues, so I have two things to pass out right now, one concerning each. And we wanted to get to know the community a little better, I'm from Cumberland, um, but I work with all of Harlan County, so I'm really excited to learn more, um, let me get these here for y'all. That should be enough for everybody at the table, and then this one is for a free wheels clinic, um, this is just a free service that we've brought here with our legal partners we got. Now, this water program, we just really, we wanna listen, we wanna learn, and, um, also sharing knowledge that we'd have anyone ask questions at the event, um, this will be at the library on the second, so, that's what, that is my.
As we say.
Inside there.
Take out help when you need it.
I'll hang on that side.
Good night.
Thank you, so. Yeah, now the wheels one does involve everybody, the Everett one, we did do this, uh, four-year-olds community, we're just really wanting to learn more, and also, like I said, share any knowledge, if there's anything that, um, anybody has questions at the event. But we have a little agenda going on there that we, uh, have planned, and then we also, I was up at the end for it. Um, I, I wanna be here more often, be at these, uh, meetings and learn more about you all, so I'm very excited to be here, that's all I have.
Okay, has anybody got any questions? Anybody got questions here? Anybody got anything else, or close me?
I just got one question, sorry, I'm from Harlan, I was covering how the homeless is down there, and how it's exploded here like big cities. I was over at Tent City Antichrist stands the past two days covering the stuff, is it that bad up here now? I forgot to ask him or anybody on Facebook.
It is.
Like tents and stuff.
I will say, I feel like it's, it may be a better question for the officers, of course, they had it.
Right.
To go.
Yeah.
We still got a lot of it, it's, I don't know if it's as bad as it was about two years ago, because it got really bad about two years ago.
Oh.
But we still got it, uh, we've got some, uh, we've got some people, some tents up on the riverbank here and there, uh, yeah, it's still, it was still an issue, it is an issue. You know, and I want people to understand, uh, one thing about homelessness.
Sir.
It is not against the law to be poor.
Nah, I'm poor.
People need to remember that, because a lot of people don't, they look at it differently, you know, why are you, why do you allow them to have a tent on the riverbank? Well, we're not allowing them to do it, but there is nothing in the world against the law of being poor, we're all been there, we're all still there, so, uh, you know, we've gotta help them, not let them on, so, that's, that's the way it is.
Now, what I was wondering is, sorry, like, they let them antichrist people in, I hate saying them, because I'm like, them, you know? But they, Christ hands will let people in from like eight to seven-thirty, and then they, they're just back out in the cold, and it warms up, y'all don't have nothing up here, y'all can let people stay.
We don't have anything in Everest.
What about, what's in the Old Everest gym?
Daddy's.
I'm from Harlan, guys, I know this, and I don't mean no disrespect.
No, the Everest gym is owned by the Farm for, Club, it's Club for Education for Progress, is that correct, the name of that group? And that is, that is a group that owns it, they own that and the depot, I, I wish the city did have access to that stuff, but it's not, they don't have access to it.
That's all I got, thank you.
Yeah, and I wish there was more places up here, I do know they give meals out down here on the main street.
Baptist church does.
Baptist church, so, and you see a lot of blessing boxes, and I think they're utilized good in Everest.
Yeah, I believe I are.
I wish people would understand that, because I, we do complaints about homelessness, and that's the first thing I always say to them, is it's not against the law to be poor, you know, so. If it wasn't for the grace of God, we'd all be that way, or you'd be that way, so, that kinda changes people's tongues a little bit, without complaining about it, you know, they just, they just, for a place to lay their head in.
We could put that application boxes up with the blessing boxes too.
Yeah.
Wouldn't hurt, would it?
All right, do you think you got anything here? Do you have anything else?
All right.
I think it's.
I'll take it in.
Next thing, is there anybody? Let me get your guy.
Yes, and these, I'm gonna get these hung up more as well, but this is for the water, and this is for the wheels plant.
All right, thank you, honey.
You're very welcome.
Educated little stuff instead of educating today, over and everything I can.
Eddie, we'll see you next month, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Get it, I got all them numbers on my YouTube page to everybody they can call. All right, that concludes the Everett City Council meeting, y'all have a good one. Make sure you like, comment, subscribe, and share. You're welcome to send super thanks, and you can even be a member of the channel if you wanna be. I'm going to end this one here. Here's what we got there, it's like a meeting on the third or first, oh, March second, one to three.
Me and this man racing more help than anybody in the goddamn town, you know, of course.
Trying to, ain't we?
All right, y'all, I'm gonna end this, because I'm not gonna have no service going back down thirty-eight, I can promise you, so, I'll be back live, when I get home, it's your boy Crack.
Those chat, those things to call, the numbers to call are on my YouTube page.
They're on his YouTube page.
They're the community, and you'll find it down there, there's a bunch of numbers to call.
Best belief, she'll tie around Davies, I'll be coming, and if you motherfuckers don't come, gone somewhere else.
Y'all take care, guys.
Crack, I'm out, I'll be back when I'm home. Bet I got thirty-three hundred views, let's see. Thousand and ninety.
Pretty good, brother.
That's it.
Y'all make sure you like, comment, subscribe, share, you can become a member of the channel for a dollar ninety-nine, and you can also send your super thanks and super chats, and y'all have a good one, take care.